And then it shifts to Gail. So we don't have the little boxes like you. Yeah, go to the top right of the black screen. You can either, you might, you might, you don't want to be in, you can either be in full screen or exit full screen.
Yeah, exit full screen is probably what you want.
You should have everybody.
Now, where would I find that?
Kind of in the top of the, the top of.
Zoom screen?
The zoom screen. Says speaker view. It would say speaker view. If you put your cursor up there, you'll see speaker view. Enter full screen.
Okay, there's a little box.
What does it say?
It has, it has a blue, a blue box, a little white box and a little, another white box. And that's all there is.
It's not, it, yes, it says speaker view and then it says, please, exit full screen. What does it say? Does it say anything if you hover over it?
It doesn't, it doesn't say anything. I've done, I've done a lot of these Zoom and I don't recognize, I mean, it's so much easier usually to, to do it.
You can't hear us at all, Mary?
I can hear you and I can see you on a big screen.
Right, what's happening, Mary, is you are only seeing the person who's speaking.
Speaking.
That's right.
And so it's the view that you have, the view that's selected for this, for this particular Zoom meeting that you joined. And the only way I know of to change that is to, up on the top of.
Was that the gavel I heard? In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, June 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into remote virtual hearing. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. The supplemental notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board and Milburn Town Hall front door. Supplemental notice was also forwarded to the official newspapers, submitted to the township clerk and published in the item on June 11th, 2020.
Thank you. Okay, I wanted just to say a couple of things.
Let me take the roll call first.
Pardon me, yes, roll call.
Mary McNabb?
Here.
Craig Clettner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Evan Wenzel?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
Okay, now I want to say a few words. First of all, I noticed today, as I was going over everything, that I had two copies of one of the applications in my packet. I didn't notice it until today. So I'm wondering if I got somebody else's. It's the Culligan matter, which by the way, has been moved to number one on tonight's agenda. At the request of Mr. Keller. But is, does everyone else have a Culligan application packet?
Joe, I had, I had two also.
You had two?
I had two copies of it.
Okay. All right, that was the first thing. Secondly, the New Jersey Energy Matter. Now that is a matter that is the gas station and convenience store down on Milburn Avenue. On Vox, corner of Oxwell Road. That matter, we had a extension that was entered into by the applicant that expired at the end of this month. With the help of Gail Fraser, our attorney, we were able to get a new waiver extension of the decision on the application till October 31st, 2020. However, there was a quid pro quo. And the quid pro quo was, we were asked and ultimately we agreed to give them between now and October 31st, four hours on various meeting agendas for them to complete the, the presentation of their application. I agreed to that. Now, I don't know exactly when we're going to give them that four hours. I may not be able to make the only meeting in September, which is the meeting of September 21st. But we have a number of meetings before then. There's a general view of Eileen and Gail, I think, and myself, at least, that that application really needs to be conducted in not a virtual meeting such as this, but in an actual meeting. And I'm hoping that the second, by the second meeting in July, or certainly by the August meetings, we'll be back in the municipal building. And I will work with Gail and Eileen to make sure that they get their four hours before October 31st. We'll need another extension from them because there's no way that even if they complete their presentation by October, October 31st, there's no way that the opposition will complete. And as you people know, at the last meeting, we retained a traffic engineer, engineering firm. And I've signed the contract with them and returned it to Eileen. So we're gonna need, I'm sure, both meetings.
Let's cross that bridge when we come to it.
Pardon me?
Let's cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah. Okay. Now, the next and last item that I want to get into before we start the actual agenda and start hearing cases, where, as I indicated before, the first case will be calendar 3745-20, 10 Forest Drive North. That's the Culligan matter. But before we get to that, I just want to report back to the members of the board where we stand on retention of a new attorney for next year. I have spoken on several occasions to Gail Fraser and who has been the attorney, as you folks know, for many years for this board and has done a superb job. I've asked her on several occasions if there's any way that she can say, see her way clear to giving us one more year. And she has made it very clear that she is retiring from the practice of law on December 31st of 2020. So we need a new attorney. Now, we had a couple of alternatives as to how we would proceed. And after talking to Eileen and Gail and Jessica, we determined to do it this way, as opposed to putting an RFP in the newspapers and getting a ton of applications, most of which will be from people who are not qualified. We put our heads together, that is, Eileen, Gail, myself, Ed Boozak, who's the attorney for the planning board. And we've come up with a list of, I think it's now up to eight names. And we have a letter that has been drafted and approved. The letter was drafted by Gail Fraser to send to each of these people. They're telling them what we're looking for and asking them by a date certain, which is going to be July 31st, if they will respond by sending in their resumes and evidences of interest. I'm hopeful that all eight will agree to be considered. And I have asked Craig Clettner, who has agreed to join a small subcommittee of myself, Jessica Glad and Craig to review the resumes and talk among ourselves and hopefully interview the finalists. Maybe three finalists. And then report back to you folks as to our suggestion for an attorney to replace Gail for next year. Gail has made it clear that, given the nature of the things that need to be done when you have a new attorney for the board, that she would suggest that we do this, that is, the board make a decision by the meeting of November the 6th, I think it is, it's the first meeting in November. And we are aiming for that meeting for the subcommittee of three to come before the full board and give you our recommendation as to who we think would be appropriate to replace Gail Fraser. So that is what we need to do. The last thing, and I already referred to it, is I received a telephone call from Mr. Keller, who is appearing on behalf of the Culligans for the property at 10 Forest Drive. That appeared as number four on your agenda for tonight. He asked if he could go first because he has another meeting in another community this, this evening. And I told him that that was, that would be appropriate. So for those of you who have your oh, one more thing that I need to say before we tackle the Culligan matter, and that is the annual report that has been circulated to you folks. I want to publicly thank Jessica Glad, who undertook basically to do this this year. It was circulated to everyone and Mary McNabb had one epigraphical suggestion, which appears on the second page of the audio document. It's in the I'm looking for it now. Mary, help me.
It's changing chairs to plural from singular.
I'm looking to see exactly where that is.
I made that change.
Anyway, there was one word where it needed to be plural instead of singular, and that change has been made. So this report and his history of these annual reports over the, I don't know, 14 years or so that I've been on this board, is we don't vote on it. The chair, and in this case, the vice chair as well, is, are responsible for having Eileen circulate the annual report to the planning board and to the township committee. Is there anybody, after reading this, had, has, does anyone have any other comments or suggested changes they want to make to this document? I see.
I had sent, actually, Joe, I had sent an email, I think about an hour or so ago, just looking at one more thing, just in the third to last paragraph where it refers to South Mountain R5 Zone. Should that be R6 as in the fourth to last paragraph?
Let me open this. You said it's on the second page?
The second full page, yeah. Well, that should be the, it'd be the last page, the last page, third to last paragraph.
And which paragraph?
Third to last.
You mean the next to last?
Third to last. So the second, the second paragraph on the last page.
Oh, the South Mountain R5 Zone, Eileen? I can't hear you, Eileen.
I'll make that change.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so that document is going to be circulated to the planning board of the township committee. I think those are the matters that I wanted to speak about before we began. So if we can now, we should turn to the first matter on the agenda, which I indicated tonight will be the Culligan matter. And then somebody bring the Culligan folks in.
They're here. Waiting for Rich Keller.
Is Keller with us? There he is. Okay, who wants to go first?
Do they need to be sworn?
They have to be sworn in by Eric.
Yep, if you would just raise your right hand, please. You swear from the testimony, you give the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth in this matter?
Yes.
Just state your names and spell it for the record, please.
I'm Jumana Culligan, J-U-M-A-N-A, Culligan, C-U-L-L-I-G-A-N.
And Brendan Culligan, B-R-E-N-D-I-N.
Richard Keller, K-E-L-L-E-R.
Thank you.
Yes, the answer is that on the agenda, it was just brought to my attention that we have minutes to approve. But let's get through this application first. We'll go back to the minute.
We can do that at the end.
Okay, so who's going to speak first on this application?
Brendan Jumana, why don't you give a brief explanation and then I'll hop in.
Okay, so we're basically just trying to do a renovation on our kitchen and mudroom. We bought the house about 10 years ago, almost to the day, and we had a lot of problems with mudroom from day one. In fact, it was, you know, when it rained, it rained inside the mudroom. So there's always been problems, it's also quite small for the size of the house. So we're just looking to expand it a little bit, put in some storage, much-needed storage. The mudroom also is lacking in insulation. We tried pumping some in, we actually even put in underfloor heating, but that room stays to about 55 degrees in the winter. So there's just much-needed upgrades to the mudroom and kitchen. So that's basically it. And then also with regards to the terrace in the back, there's a retaining wall that's kind of bowed out and I think at any moment could probably collapse. And, you know, railings, wrought iron railings that are just old and crumbling, so it's just time to redo them.
Okay. Rich?
Certainly. Good evening and thank you, thank you Chairman Steinberg and members of the board for accommodating me. My, I was last on the agenda at Providence and all of a sudden everyone dropped out. I'm due at 8:15 or 8:30, so I appreciate the board's indulgence. If I can share the screen, I'm going to.
Mr. Keller, before you do that, could we have your credentials?
Yes, certainly. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer and land surveyor, I'm sorry, professional civil engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as an engineer since 1990 and as a planner since 1991. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a declare concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. And I hold a master's degree with a concentration in urban planning and design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Where I also taught for approximately 11 years, both graduate and undergraduate divisions. I've appeared before this board, approximately 110 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. And currently the board, both planning board and board of adjustment engineer for Long Hill Township. And I have been the planning consultant to the Caldwell, our Caldwell Planning Board and Board of Adjustment as well. My licenses are still in good effect.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. I have, I do have a couple of exhibits. The existing conditions and proposed conditions, plans, I added a little color to. And I'll get to those in a second. I'm going to just start out and share screen with a photo exhibit. It's A1. It is seven annotated, let me share screen. Hold on, where did I go? I think, where'd that go? There we go. Share one. Okay, I have, the first exhibit is A1. It's seven annotated site and neighborhood photos. Application 3745 for Brenda and Jumana Culligan. The photos were taken by me personally today, June 15th, 2020. I'll walk you through the photos and then I'll go on to the drawings. The, the first photo is a photograph of the property. Photograph number one is looking at the front of the house at 10 Forest Drive. It's an historic home that was built in, this part was built in 1895. Subsequent additions were built in the 1940s and in the 1990s. There's also some internal renovations in 2005. If we, it is a corner property. It's got 125 feet of frontage along Forest Drive. As we round the corner onto Park Place, you'll see the, where the 19, the 1895 house gives way to the later additions, garage additions. And right between the, what is the kitchen, right beyond the tree and I'm pointing to with the cursor in the center of the drawing, the brick panel with the single window, is the kitchen, a bow window, a bay window for a breakfast area. There is the link between the kitchen area, a master bedroom above, and the two-car garage. That is the porch that covers the access to the, the current mudroom. We come further down the street and we look back, now looking southwest towards that. You can see there's the link, there's the mudroom that Jumana was referring to. Right now, it's got two sort of spindly columns and a mudroom wall that's recessed quite a bit. The proposed application, which I'll go over in a few minutes, we're not changing this roof line at all. Essentially, we're bringing that mud wall that is, we're bringing the line of this, of this mudroom, we're bringing it forward to match the line of the columns. And we're putting a new door in, brackets in, much more historically correct in terms of the detailing to match the existing home. We then go around and just to the left, we come through the gate from photograph number three into photograph number four. This is the view of the rear yard of the property, looking west. And in the distance, you can't see it, but that's the adjoining home that's to the west of us on 6 Forest Drive. You can see there's a swimming pool and there is a, a brick terrace. This is the one that Jumana was referring to, which is crumbling and needs repair. And since it needs repair, it also made sense, I go to the next photograph. It is rather narrow in proportion. There's a, there are two terraces. The first brick, it's all been, this brick has been designed into this chimney, all of the corbeling and detailing, which matches the old historic. There are two exits out of the family room onto the upper terrace, which really just, it has the barbecue grill, it's rather small. It's got an existing historic wall, you take a couple steps down, and this is the primary entertaining patio. And if you visited the site today, you see that with the table on it, the chairs basically go just about up to the brick wall in the, in the family room. And the other chairs basically go just about up to the, to the railing. And the wall is in poor shape. We're looking to basically extend that four feet so it'll line up with the main house. There'll be a divider between and stairs, it won't touch. But we're basically going to fill in where you see the bed and about an extra foot, that'll be the expanded patio. And that planting bed will just move out to another four feet beyond that. Photograph number six is again looking back from the, to the house, looking to the north. Again, you can see there is a stair that goes down into the basement, that will also be reworked. This brick wall will remain, this brick wall will remain, we're just going to extend that, we are seeking to extend that patio out. And finally, photograph number seven, this is the area we're going to extend seven feet. This actually wall is not in bad shape, but masked by the plantings, this wall is in poor shape and the railings are really no longer properly attached. You can see they're collapsed in one section. This area here, the stairs will be brought back further to allow for more congenial entry and a left turn into a new door into the main body of the old home. That's the, that's the existing site photos. I did want to point out two critical elements. One is, on photograph number six, is the dense screening along the perimeter. So this area of the house cannot be seen by the neighbors. And also, that area can't be seen from the street along Park Place because the garage and mudroom addition block it. And there's also a, a street fence along there. And then back to the very first photograph, photograph number one, you can see the screening from Forest Drive is very dense existing vegetation into a fence. You can't see the backyard, you can't see the pool, you can't see any of the proposed work in the backyard from any perspective. If I now go to my.
Mr. Keller, before you do that, was it seven photos or eight?
It was seven photos. There was eight pages, a cover sheet and seven photos.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This is the existing conditions drawing, which is part of your packet. I decided to add a little color because it was confusing. It's a survey by others and it's a, it's a somewhat okay copy, but I decided to add a little color to it. This is my exhibit A2. It is a colored version, version of the existing condition drawing. There's no changes other than the color that has been added to what's in your package. Again, you've got that 125 feet of frontage, roughly 200 feet of frontage along Park Place. The lot is a 25,092 square foot lot in the R4 zone where 20,000 square feet is required, so it is a conforming lot. What's unique about the area, though, is that Park Place has only a 40-foot right-of-way. So it's a very narrow street, narrow carriageway, as well as it's one of the older homes in town. And you can see the existing home, the 1890s home, the subsequent additions, additions, you can see, if we zoom up, the garage is only 12.1 feet off of Park Place. The, the far side of the garage is at 13.1. And the, the gutter line from the roof, the porch roof that's in front of the existing line of the mudroom, which is between the word porch and 11.2 on the drawing where I'm pointing to, that's the wall we're moving. That's set back 22.39 feet from the street. We're looking to basically move that up to capture that space. Also, we have a variance because the blue line you see indicated is the 80-foot and 12-foot setback allowable for, required for accessory structures. 80 feet from Park Place, 80 feet from Forest, 12 feet off the sidelines. That blue outline is the only place that accessory structures are allowed on this property. So the pool is roughly in that area. However, the brick, the upper brick patio, where you have the two doors coming out of the family room onto the dining patio, the undersized dining patio, that sits 30.77 feet from the street. So while it is completely screened by the existing house, technically, it's an existing non-conforming condition because it's less than 80 feet from the street. Our ordinance doesn't make any distinction between whether you can see it or not. That's the, that's the existing drawing. I'm going to go over to the, what I've labeled as A3, which is the proposed plan with color dated today, June 15th. And what I've done on this drawing, if I've, if I've shown that the, the main house is still at 15.2. The, that line that was at 23.39 before, we're moving that line of the wall up to match those columns. There's still a little bit of a roof overhang there, but that will come up to 17.17. So it technically needs a variance, it's not 40 feet back from the street. The average setback, by the way, on this block is 32.7. So all of these houses are closer than 40 feet. But what's important to notice is that we're still set back from the. But what's important to notice is that we're still set back from the primary elements, the garage and the kitchen, that is still set back from those at 17.17. The, that talks about the, the mudroom and I'll go, I'll show the architect's drawings in a second. The, the enlarged room, actually, we're picking up five foot, three inches by the full of 11, roughly 12 feet, 11 points up, 11.2 feet, we're picking up in that area. It's less than 60 square feet or just about 60 square feet that we're capturing as new floor area ratio. We're well under the permitted floor area ratio, but that's what's being converted from building that is open to building that is closed. There's no change in the building coverage. The proposed terrace is in yellow, that's where we're looking at extending it four feet so it aligns with the existing line of the historic home. There'll be, that will make that more ease, better to accommodate a dining or a dining table where people can actually get in, get past each other, make it more functional and that while they rebuild that. And then, there'll be a stair down, there'll be a slightly enlarged patio. It's not really a patio, it's a connective walkway that we come down a couple steps and you can turn and go down the next set of steps and into that new door. But because it gets wider than four feet, this is technically considered a patio as well in our coverage numbers. So these two areas, you'll see that the proposed terrace addition starts at 60.67 feet. That's where we match into the existing terrace. We come out that additional four feet to a line and we pick up a little bit of a connector from the stairs, the stairs into the, the pool patio. And that's, that represents the total amount of the changes to the site. We need, the, the modifications represent an extra 129 square feet of increased terrace area between the, that's the upper area and 74 square feet in the, is the connective link. The variance relief needed is for front yard setback to Park Place, and that relates to the mudroom. The minimum required is 40 feet, the existing house is 12.1 at its closest. The mudroom portico actually is, the gutter line is at 16.7. When we bring that out to match the column line, will be, will be at, the mudroom enclosure will be, I'm sorry, the distance will be 17.17. So it's 23.39 now, it'll go to 17.17 as we adjust for that. We also need a, a variance for accessory coverage. This is not uncommon with corner lots. 7% is permitted, that's 1,756 square feet is permitted. The existing application is at 9.36%, and we're going up to a proposed 10.37%. That is a 2602. However, I would point out that we are well under on our total impervious coverage on the site, so certainly not an overdevelopment. Because this house is biased to the street and it's long and linear, it creates a very large backyard, which can easily accommodate that's, that excess of 7% up to 10.37%. And then finally, we need the variance from accessory setback on a corner lot where 80 feet is required. The existing, what we're proposing is the 60.67 for the new part, and we, the existing would, would remain, the two terraces would remain. I can, I have the architecture, I can go through them quickly. I think they're nominal, but I will go through them quickly, and this is part of your package. This is Sheet A1, which shows the existing mudroom wall at the back. It's relatively tight, very little storage. There's the two columns, which I think are somewhat spindly as I've indicated. And then, we move over to the proposed condition. There's really no expansion of the kitchen. The kitchen is somewhat undersized, but they've decided to open that up into the family room and really get the most by moving that wall from that five foot, three inches from roughly where it says mudroom, out to the column line. That allows for additional millwork, allows for this air, whole area to be insulated, both in terms of sound as well as heat. This area can be rebuilt under the existing roof line. So that, that picks up the garage, has an increased area up a couple stairs, up one step, excuse me, into the kitchen area, which is just really being opened up. So the architect was careful to not expand the kitchen area, just to rework the program to make it more functional. But really, the mudroom was the key to that change on the front of the house. We go to the, the A300 in your package, you can see what I'm referring to as, the door is really sort of lackluster, the columns are somewhat spindly for the size and certainly the grandeur of the main home. The applicant is essentially looking to rebuild that in something that's more appropriate. So this wall comes forward, that five foot, three inches, it's bracketed to hold up the existing roof line, that's, that does come proud of that. And there are side lights and a much more attractive glass door into that mudroom. The, these drawings get a little tough to read on the A302. This is looking at the back of the house, and if you look at the section, if you look at this, you can see, it appears that the only difference is that we've added a stair in here, but actually, this whole area comes forward towards the viewer by four feet. But it is still tucked against the building, completely hidden from view. We go to the, and you can see there's the, there's the entrance down into the basement on the left side of A302. We go to, this is looking at, at the building from the side, you're looking at the two doors that go into the family room. And you can see that this is where the existing patio stops, it's being extended out to align with the main house, that roughly four foot, three inches. And there'll be a stair that comes down. So you can see that this stair gets extended, the wall gets extended, and the stairs come down, and that wraps into the stairs that then go down. You can see on the section to the right of A303, this is where you, those stairs have been brought forward to the left, and now you come down the stairs and a new door will be added for functionality into the main house. Again, those, those have no repercussions in terms of zoning, it's just what's happening on the drawing. So that's the architecturals. If I go to the, if I go to the planning testimony. We think that this is clearly a C variance, where the board can grant this because of an extraordinary, exceptional situation affecting a property and the structures lawfully thereon, and that the strict application of the zoning ordinance results in practical difficulties in develop, in further developing this property. Anything we do to that facade there, any, any move to that line, because we're less than 40 feet, even though we're keeping it well tucked back in between the main, the other masses, so it remains subordinate to those, those, the garage and the, the kitchen area, it still requires a variance because it's less than the 40 feet required from the street. The, we also think that in terms of the, the addition, in the, the infill addition to the mudroom, we think that's also a C2 variance, where the purposes of the land use act are advanced. I think it's a much-approved aesthetic, it's a dark entry, it's, it's kind of mean-spirited, and it's aesthetically unattractive, given the rest of the home. We think the addition is, is a, an appropriate addition, and that was, that was, that was approved, that was agreed to by the Historic Preservation Commission, which approved this plan in, in January. The, we think that the negative criteria is met, there is no substantial detriment to the good, to the public good, and there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. There is no detriment to the public good. The one-story, 60-square-foot infill addition to the existing mudroom is setback and remains subordinate to the main mass and flanking wings of the kitchen and garage. The addition to the terrace will align, the, the addition to the terrace will align with the southerly side of the existing dwelling at a distance of 92 feet from Forest Drive. Given the existing geography, pool fencing and landscaping, the terrace will not be seen from Forest Drive. And while the area of the proposed mid-level terrace expansion, while this area here is also less than 80 feet, it's approximately 60.67 square feet from Park Place, the existing house, garage and fence completely obscure any view from Park Place. This cannot be seen or, or it can only nominally seen by the neighbors due to the existing landscaping to remain. We think it is consistent with the master plan. Master plan seeks, its primary goal is to encourage, encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. And Objective 101 is to, to protect the character, establish residential neighborhoods, and encourage land use and development at an appropriate scale and density. We think that it certainly contributes to the neighborhood and the, the board that is most trusted in protecting that in our, in, in our prime historic district is the HPC, and they agreed in when they approved it in January. We think it's a great, it's a nominal application, we think it's a great application in the evolution of making this 1895 home work for contemporary family. We think the ask is modest and we ask that you approve it.
Mr. Chairman?
Any questions from board members? Just witness, either of the two witnesses.
I, I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Keller, my questions are for you.
Yep.
Because in the application package, Attachment E, it indicates that the request for front yard setback is 15.2 feet, consistently the zoning officer's report. But in your testimony, you're referring to the new mudroom setback is 17.17 feet. But the, I, I just want to confirm, the front yard setback being requested is to the 15.2, correct?
Actually, I, I misread the drawings. There was a step that lines up with the front of the building. I thought the roof was coming forward to the front line of the building, but it's not, it's staying where it is. So the 15.2 is the existing overhang of, it's, it's the adjoining edge of the kitchen area. The, actually, the roof will remain at 16.7, which is where you measure a building to when it's just an eve more than four feet, or it's a, it's, it's a roof supported by columns. When it becomes a building, you get to exempt up to two feet of overhang. So then I take the offset to the building, not to the 16.7 foot overhang, and the building is at 17.17. So my testimony was correct, we had a mistake on the application, Attachment E.
So the variance request for front yard setback is 17.17 feet?
17.17 to the mudroom wall, and it remains 16.7 to the, to the, to the roof, but that's exempted. Correct.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, again, Attachment E indicates the accessory setback, corner lot setback. On Attachment E, it indicates 61.50 feet, but on the survey, the proposed survey, you're showing it, and your testimony was 60.67 feet. So that's the request, correct?
It is 60.67, correct. Yeah, there was, there was a, over time, there were some changes to the drawings, and we actually went out and did a couple of field measurements because they weren't on the survey, and we adjusted that to be the 60.60.
All right. Now, I just have a question about the terrace expansion. Because in the application package, it says the mid-level terrace, that's I think where the table and chairs are.
Correct.
Is 129 square foot addition. And then it says in the application package, 74 square feet at the upper terrace. But I thought now you just said it's the mid-level terrace, and then what you described as a connecting walkway, but because it's four foot wider, you have to include it. So I'm a little confused what's happening to the upper terrace.
Yeah, you, the, there's nothing happening to the upper terrace. Hold on, that's the, let me get the right one up here.
Because, because I get a to, if I add up 129 and 74 square feet, I get a total terrace expansion of 203 square feet.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not the, it's not the terrace. If we can go to the, the 74 square, the up, the upper terrace is not changing, so I, I may have had a typo in the, in the application, but the upper terrace remains unchanged. The 74 square feet is that connective walk, where you come down one set of steps and turn. And technically, because it's wide enough and it serves the, the accessory use, my discussions with the zoning officer, Eileen Davitt, she said I had to consider this as accessory. So this is the, this is the 74 square feet, so I've got 129 on the upper part, and I believe it's 74 square feet on the lower part.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question? Now, if there were someone, how would we know that?
They would use their hand.
Okay. So we've heard, we, we, we see none and we hear none, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion about this matter from board members? My only comment has to do with, I'm looking at the summary of variances requested. I'm looking at the third one, where the maximum, the minimum required by ordinance is that 80 feet, which is twice the 40-foot setback. This board on numerous occasions in its annual report has commented to both the Planning Board and to the Township Committee, that we get lots and lots of these applications where the, the setback is doubled because it's a corner lot. And we've asked without success for the Planning Board and the Township Committee to make some change to that requirement. And so I, whenever I see one of those, I'm inclined to grant just for devilman's sake. But I think that the case has been made out very well by the applicant and the applicant's expert for all three of these variances. So is there any further discussion of any of them, any or all of them? It's not, is there a motion?
Approval?
My second.
The second is by whom?
The second is by Mary. Who made the motion?
I did.
Mary McNabb, second is. All in favor, raise your hand, please.
Yeah, roll call. Roll call.
Oh, you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, you need a roll call.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Roy Siegel?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay, now you're off to New Providence. Now, we're going to go back.
Thank you very much. Same seat, different place, but thank you, good night.
Good night. Now, we're going to go back to our regular matters on the agenda, so we have the Shetty And we're going to get the applicant and/or the applicant's architect on the screen. There's Mr. Flessy, I see his name, and Mr. Shetty, but I don't see their pictures yet. This is a continuation of a matter that was previously heard, I don't know, I guess it was back in March, or maybe even February.
Mr. Chairman Steinberg, before we proceed, I just, I had this discussion with Gail at our prior meeting, which was February 3rd. Craig, Jody, Joy, and Wolfgang, and Steve, were not present and are not able to vote on this application. The other panel members are Mary, Jessica, Joseph Steinberg, Kevin Wenzel.
Four. Are there any C, D variances here?
No.
No. Okay, so a majority vote means you need three of the four. Okay, who's going to testify here?
Or?
Is that Mr. Shetty?
Yes.
And Mr. Shetty. And you're going to be sworn, and Mr. Flessy, you're going to be sworn now too.
Mr. Flessy, unmute yourself.
Did I get it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if everybody would just raise their right hands to, before the testimony you're about to give...
Okay, if everybody would just raise their right hands to, if you swear upon the testimony you're about to give, and these proceedings be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
I do. Okay, if you, if everyone would just state their names for the record, one at a time.
My name is Vikas. Vikas Shetty, applicant. My wife.
My name is Sridhivishetty.
Could you spell your first name, please?
Vikas.
No.
V as in Victor, R as in Ink, S as in Tango, P as in Apple, S as in Sam, Vikas and Shetty. It doesn't.
Your wife's first name. How do you spell that?
S as in Sam, H as in Henry, R as in Rainbow, I as in Ink, B as in Doctor, E as in Elephant, V as in Victor, I as in Ink.
Who's going to testify here?
The Shettys were going to start for just a minute or so, and then I would pick, I'll pick everything up. Correct?
Chair, chairman and the staff, right? So I moved to this town two years back when my baby, baby girl was just born. She was like 10 days old when we moved into this house, right? And we have a younger, elder kid who's like eight years. Since then, then when we bought the house, and then we realized that we need a placeet for our kid to play. So the only place we could have put, because it was the biggest space, was on the side yard, and I put it there. I didn't know about the variance I had to take, and I put that player, and while she was enjoying, apparently I didn't take variance, so that's how I put the variance. Now, I, I'll tell you the importance of the placeet for my kid is during the COVID-19 situation since like March, that's the only way she could play, and my son and daughter could play there because all the parks were locked down. And, you know, that's the only way I could entertain that. It was very handy, right? So a placeet is very important. More importantly, the fence around that placeet is important, too, because just two days back, it apparently happened two days back, even though there are a lot of bushes around my area, two days back, we were sitting and my daughter was playing and suddenly, and she walked through the, one of the space in the bushes, and she walked outside and she was about to go almost on the road. We caught it and, thank God, we caught it on the time, but that incidence was shocking, right? Because she could go through the space and get to the road, which is a, Hobart is a very crowded road. And my wife can speak for a minute or so for that, on that one.
Yeah, just to add a point on that, that I'm having sleepless nights after that, you know, we would really, if the case gets approved.
Okay, so I'm going to pick up from, from there. Can everybody hear me?
Well, I'm going to stop now for just one minute. Eileen, did you just get an email from one of our board members?
I'm not at work. I'm at home.
Wolfgang says his notes indicate he was at the meeting when this matter was heard.
And it's in the minutes, too.
Was it the February 2 meeting?
February 3.
February 3.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I don't have, I don't have, I'm not, I'm not at work, so I don't have any of that information. You're saying you were there. I have you.
I can show you the minutes.
Yeah, okay, well.
Then you're eligible. If you, if you were present and participated in the hearing, then you're eligible.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
With, you didn't recuse on a conflict, did you, Wolfgang? Okay.
Okay, proceed.
Okay. Eileen, can you allow, can I, can you take my screen or share my screen or?
You can.
But don't you have to invite me?
You're here.
All right, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I'm sorry.
Bottom.
Oh, no, 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 I got it. I got it. You know, um. I, um. I can't really share with you. I'm going to try to share, but I don't think it's in my. No, I don't have to.
All of the board members, you have a copy of Tim Clessy's plan with the photographs in your package, correct? You'll all just nod your head or?
Yes.
Okay, Tim, all of the board.
I'm going to have to go without it because I don't have a photograph of the PDF, and I can't figure out how to share. I want to just share my screen, but I can't figure out how to do it.
There's a shared button.
PDF document up and have it minimized, and then you'd be able to share it.
Can you see that screen?
No, we can't see anything. We can't even see.
I don't know how to.
All right, we all have it. We all have it.
Okay, I don't know how to do it.
We have a one-sheet document from you on your firm's letterhead.
Good. I'll walk you right through it. Do you have my, my exhibit, a 24 by 36-inch sheet drawing with you, or did you get it electronically?
They have. A one.
Yes. It's my exhibit one. I'd just like to go right to my exhibit one sheet. Can everybody pull it out for me?
We all have it.
On the left side is the, is the site plan, and on that site plan, I loaded where the place, where the place set is. And on that, I, the placeet is about 10 feet off of the property line on the Hobart app side. And it's about 70 feet off the property line on the hillside side. So what we're hoping, there's really no spot on this lot to put anything. If you take a look at the lot that I have on this same drawing, you can see that there's an easement across the back. There's also kind of no backyard on the two sort of side yards of this property. I just really have a front yard. There's actually no real grass area. So what I was proposing to do was to circle this area with a four-foot-high fence, which is the fence that's indicated in the upper right-hand corner of the sheet. It's that aluminum, that black aluminum open fence. And it's my picture one. And below that is my picture two, which is another fence like this that I put in about five years ago. And I just wanted you to see how the planting has grown around that fence so that the fence at this point doesn't even appear in view. Okay, that house is down on, right off of Whitney Road, that photo two. Now, if I come back to my site plan, I'm trying to take the fence and make a U around this area. I lined it with the front wall of the house, brought it along the property line on the Hobart side, and then brought it up the driveway and back to that little walkway area that gets them into the side door. I circled the entire fence area with six-foot-high conifers. And I would like to make as part of this agreement that the owner agrees to take all of their miscellaneous furniture, like I noticed a couple of plastic chairs that were out in the, what I'm going to call the front yard area on hillside, that all of that stuff could get behind then this fence and behind this planting, and then not be visible from the road. Additionally, if you look underneath on the left where I wrote that word, site plan, we would paint the entire placeet this darker brown color so that it matches better into the, into the landscape. And you can see how the site, how the placeet pops out right now in that photograph A that's on the sheet. And additionally, additionally, we agreed to remove the placeet when the youngest child reaches 14. If you look at now, I'm going to take you to photograph A, that's the existing placeet, like I'm standing on the sidewalk on Hobart. Underneath this higher planting that you see is where I'm proposing the six-foot-high conifers. In photo B, I'm closer to the corner, and you can see the same problem. The six-foot conifers would handle this. The problem of seeing the placeet. Photo C, there's, it's kind of barren. There's the trampoline out front that really has to be removed. G is the front driveway. Just see how this, on the left, where those trees are, is where I want to plant under to protect the view of the PlayStation. I'm going to go to E, which is really the same kind of a view, looking through this, these trees that are on Hobart. F, and then finally take it to G. You know, Hobart is an artery for us. It's a kind of a main street. It's actually very visible in the neighborhood. And this proposal is actually helpful to us because we can clean up the underbrush and clean up the landscaping. And the planting here allows us to contain all of these items that are typically in a backyard, that in this lot, really, there is no backyard for any of these items to occur. So I think it's actually a benefit to the neighborhood to allow this to go. And remember that we would paint it this dark brown color to conceal it, so it's not popping out, and also agree to move it when the the youngest child reaches 14. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Are there any questions for any of the witnesses?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can, can you hear me? What child uses a, what child uses a placeet like that at the age of 14?
I don't know. I picked that 14 because I didn't know what age to pick. I mean, you're probably, I, I don't know what age. Who said that? Because I, I couldn't see who said it.
Mary McNabb.
Oh, Mary? Yeah. I didn't know what the age should be, really, but I think that it may be helpful if, if there was an agreement of an age when this should be removed, so it doesn't become, like, starting to rot and become detrimental to the site. I picked 14. I don't, I don't know what the correct age.
You mean detrimental like the trampoline is in the corner?
The trampoline, I'd say is detrimental, yes.
Yes.
I would like the, one of the problems with an age is I, I don't know how that, it's enforced.
Yeah.
Eileen, we're going to end up picking a date, and then we'll get it. And the county clerk.
That's, I think, I think that's okay, or on selling, or maybe a date is probably better.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Yes, Shetty, question.
So, Mr. Clessy, where is the trampoline being moved?
Well, the trampoline would move into this area, this sort of U that I've created with the planting. It, that's the only location for the trampoline. I'm saying that the, into the U area that I've created with the planting, in other words, next to the swing set, below it on the sheet, inside that, what I'm calling the U, you know, I ran a fence in a U shape against the house and planted these six-foot conifers all around that U. Eileen, I think the problem is, is that the trampoline isn't actually considered an accessory building. Is that what the issue is with the trampoline?
I mean, it's accessory to, we don't require permits. We don't, there's no permit required for a trampoline because there's no, there's no foundation. They just never have asked for permits for trampolines.
But it's an access use, isn't it?
Yes. I mean, I think ideally, we'd like to get it out of sight. Right now, I think it's right on the corner of that property.
Are there any other questions for any of the witnesses?
Well, I just want to make a comment about the removal time.
We're going to hold, Mary, we're going to hold for comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Questions only now. Is there anyone in the audience for this case? And if so, if there's anyone in the audience who has a question, now is the time. I hear none. I see none. All right, we're going to go into comments from board members on this case.
So I have a comment about the removal. We were asked to do the same thing for a placeet on Meadowbrook about 10 years ago, and that placeet is still there and it's falling apart. So I think that it's very difficult to enforce that kind of, of a suggestion. I don't know how that would be done.
Well, I have, I have, I have a lot to say about this case. First of all, ignorance of the law is no excuse. And Mr. Shetty has testified that he didn't know that, what the rules were with regard to the fact that this unit needed a permit and needed to be, and needed, and needed to be approved. So my first comment is that I don't buy that. This is a very troubling case to me. You are absolutely correct, Mr. Clessy. These are two, well, you didn't say quite this, but these are two major streets in our town. And certainly, one of the two streets, Hobart, is a main thoroughfare. And Hillside, besides being the street on which two former members of this board lived, that a very celebrated member of the judiciary also lived for many years. It's a major street in town. And I, I'm going to, I'll tell you what my position is. I would hold my nose and vote to approve this application with the following changes. One, I would want, as part of the resolution, to be recorded in the SS County Clerk's office, a date certain by which this unit and the, the other unit would be removed, both of them, completely. Number two, I don't think, and I will tell everyone flat out, I made a phone call to the town forester and asked him if it is, if someone is able to buy evergreens that are not six feet above the root ball, but eight feet or higher. And he said definitely those were available. So I would, with the condition that all these trees that are shown here, and I think I counted 22 of them, if my count is correct, my memory is correct, they would have to be eight feet minimum above the root ball. And both of the units, the trampoline and this placeet, would have playset would have to be removed by a date certain. And Mr. Klessy, I'm happy for you to take a minute to consult with your clients as to what would be an appropriate date. And also in the resolution that the painting of the, of both units, not just this one, but the trampoline as well, which is a, you know, horrible mess. Frankly, if I owned them both, I would tear the trampoline down and throw it away. I don't know whether anyone even uses it, but I wouldn't let my kids on it. I'll tell you that. If I had children of that age, in any event. With those, with the painting, the moving of that trampoline unit into what you call the U. I'm, I'm saying inside the three rings, the three sides that you show on your drawing where the trees are being, are to be placed and with the condition also that the new evergreens would be eight feet above group ball, not six. I would be reluctantly, I would vote for this with those conditions. But I need a date certain because Eileen is absolutely correct. It's, you can't enforce, it's very difficult to enforce a resolution that says when the youngest child reaches the age of X. Who knows that? And certainly not the enforcement officer or the zoning officer. So we need a date certain if you want to consult with your client by all means.
Before that happens, I just want to point out that on Mr. Klessy's plan, the five conifers that are adjacent to the driveway. His plan indicates they would be four feet in height because they're going to be planted as understory underneath the existing trees. So I'm not, when I look at picture D, I'm not sure you could plant eight foot evergreens underneath that existing row of trees adjacent to the driveway. And three, when on the painting condition, I don't know what that trampoline is constructed of, but my experience is that they're usually mesh sides with metal rails, you know, and, and I'm not sure what is on a trampoline that could be painted.
It's made of metal, I, I've seen it. And I don't know whether it can be painted or not. Mr. Klessy, do you want to talk to your clients about that?
Yeah. How, how, how do I do that? So can I just talk to them with you guys here? Is that okay? I mean, I think.
Well, that's up to you and your client.
Yeah. So I would like to come add a comment, right? The trampoline is in working condition and I mean, otherwise I would not let anybody on that, right? It is in the working condition. It is, yes, it probably needs paint, but it is in working condition and full of safe. I did say, otherwise I would not let my kids there, right? And anybody can feel free to come and take a look at it, right?
I, I think, I think, I think we should take a break. Maybe if the board could hear the next case and then, and I could just give my client a call and go through it a little bit with them and come back. Is that acceptable, Joe?
I think that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Joe, Joe, I have a question for Gail.
Yes.
If we say, for example, the current property owner sells, sells the property next year. How does that condition play out in that circumstance?
If the, I'll answer that for Gail. If the, if the resolution is filed in the clerk's office, recorded in the clerk's office in Newark. Anybody who does a property search, which every buyer's attorney does, has to. That will show up. And so the next owner will be bound by whatever is in the resolution. Gail, did I say that right?
Yes, you did. And that, but that presumes that the buyer's attorney has pointed out what the resolution says to the prospective buyer.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, could, could I make one additional suggestion? And that is that we would require the Shettys to remove the playset upon sale, if the sale happens prior to the date certain. So that it doesn't survive the sale of the property.
How does the rest of you feel about that?
Yes.
So it would, they would have to remove the playset prior to a sale of the property.
Well, you could say they could, that they would have to remove the playset upon the sale of the property or
Or the date certain, whichever comes first.
Ever first occurs.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to take the next case and you can discuss this on the phone with your clients, Mr. Klessy. And then come back and tell us.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Now, the next case.
Mr. Shetty, you know, if you want, you could just put it on, I think Tim just completely left the meeting. But I think what you can do is you can mute, mute it.
Being an attendee, as an attendee.
Yeah, stop the video and then you can go make your phone call and we won't hear you or anything.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, the next case is Rippling Brook. The Craig matter. Is it Craig's with us?
I think this is one where there are people that want to participate.
Okay.
Whoever the attendees are that want to participate in the Craig case, could you please raise your hand?
Mr. Conway.
I think it was the people at nineteen Rippling Brook or seventeen Rippling Brook.
Mr. Conway, are you, do you reside at seventeen?
No, no.
You do not?
No.
That's his neighbor. They're in now. Eileen brought them in.
Tom Conway is the architect, Craig's, and I'm guessing seventy-three, four-three-two is a neighbor. I don't know.
Sounds that way, yes. We're fifteen, so it sounds like it might be our neighbor.
Is there anybody else that's waiting to get on in this matter that's listed?
No, two people have just shown up on my screen.
Hi, this is Tom Even and Dong Chen at seventeen Rippling Brook.
Okay. Who's going to present the matter for the Craigs?
So Margaret, my wife and I will start off, but then we'll hand it off fairly rapidly to, to Tom Conway, our architect, who will, will take you through it, so.
Let me just swear, are you guys in?
Sure.
If the applicant and the, and Mr. Conway raise their right hands, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Okay, I just need your name and both names of everybody who's been sworn in.
So it's Christopher Craig, C H R I S T O P H E R Craig, C R A I G.
And Margaret Craig, M A R G A R E T.
Right. And Thomas Conway, T H L M A S Conway, C O N W A Y.
All right, who's going to start?
So I'll kick it off, but I'll, I'll hand it off to Chris Craig and I'll hand it over to Tom if, if, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right, great. So first, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the board taking the time and your consideration. I really appreciate it. I know everyone's working from home. And if you're anything like me, you are spending all day long on Zoom calls just to get through your day. So thanks, everyone, for your time. So Margaret and I moved into the house in 2008. The house was built in 1967 and was, was virtually untouched when we moved in. We moved in the house because it had great bones and we were a young family and really loved the neighborhood, nice quiet block. And, and the block was certainly in the stage of turning over. Since we've moved in, I would say that, that the neighborhood has gotten younger with lots of kids. My children have made lots of friends in, in the neighborhood. They're always outside. We have a great backyard. We love outdoor living. Children are in and out of the house all day long, not just my children, but broadly children up and down the block. So we really enjoy the house and want to stay in the neighborhood. We did one renovation back in 2012 where we increased the kitchen, size of the kitchen and renovated downstairs and we really enjoyed the house. Every investment we make, we really maximize the utilization of that renovation and we really loved it. We rebuilt the pool in the backyard. And again, love the pool and love the indoor outdoor living. This renovation is about taking our house and modernizing it, bringing it up to, up to the broader standard throughout the neighborhood and really looking to just continue to invest in our house and invest in the neighborhood, which, which we really love. Part of what our plans include is additional bedrooms. I, I have older parents. My father is going, turning close to ninety. My mother is a little bit younger. More likely than not, they're going to be spending more time here visiting as they come back into the final years. And we want to make sure we can accommodate them for probably longer periods of time than a week or so that they come up. So that's part of, part of the plan for the renovation. So as you can see on the plans, and hopefully you've, you've had the opportunity to flip through, and I know a few of you taking the time to walk around the property and really appreciate it to get familiar with what we want to do. But the house hopefully will, will bring up the value of, of the neighborhood and really get our house more into that modern look and feel and take it out of nineteen sixty-seven here into, into twenty twenty. So with that, those remarks, happy to take questions at the end, but I'll hand it off to Tom, who is clearly the expert on renovations, houses and plans. So thanks, thanks a lot.
Good evening. Would you like my credentials?
Wait.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Would you like my credential?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name is Tom Conway. I'm a partner at Rosen Kelly Conway Architecture and Design. I've been there for 24 years. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, which is, and my license is current. My education is Bachelor in Environmental Design, nineteen eighty-six from Miami University. Concentration and contextual design. I have a master's in architecture from the University of Washington, nineteen ninety-two, and a certificate in historic preservation and planning. I taught for two years as, in history of architecture and historic preservation. I've served as design director of Rosen Kelly Conway. And I'm also chair, I'm currently chairman of the historic preservation commission and summit where I've been for eight years. And I also performed walking tours with Lynn Re, Renee in the Short Hills Park Historic District and designed many contextual and projects and restorations in this, in the, in the, in Melbourne and Short Hills. I presented in front of many zoning boards, New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Ohio, Washington State. I've also done over twenty New Jersey municipalities and over thirty historic preservation commissions in New Jersey.
And your license as an architect is in good standing in New Jersey?
It's in good standing, current, in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted.
Thank you.
As an architect.
Thank you. So this project, as Chris and Margaret described, is primarily for updating the house to meet their stand, their lifestyle standards and for adding some additional living space on the upper floors. The house is a, a nineteen sixty split level, unlike a typical, typical California Neutra design where it's split from the front to back. In this, as typical in Short Hills, it's been turned and you walk into the middle of the house and it splits from side to side. This exacerbates when you do add on to the house. So we've looked at, we've been working on this project for about three years. We looked at additions off the back of the house to avoid pushing, you know, over the, the volume of the house. But it really seemed to work the best where you were utilizing the existing footprint and expanding up within the width of the house and not pushing out back. They do like, there, as I said, they like the indoor outdoor living and they love their backyard. And I think that's the main reason they decided to stay on that property. And at that house, besides loving the neighborhood and the kids, et cetera. So we looked at many opportunities, so I'll kind of take you through the zoning. What we're seeking is actually what was literally risk listed as three variances has now been reduced down to two variances. We no longer require building coverage six oh six point two E two A because they have removed the shed, there's a hundred foot shed in the backyard that they actually have taken down recently. So they mentioned it to me on Friday and so I just wanted to mention that. So we're not seeking that variance because that is. And obviously, we're willing to provide you with updated information that reflects that regarding that. But what, so what we're presenting would actually only be the amount of building coverage is at fourteen percent, which it would be a total of, allowed of two thousand eight hundred square feet. We actually will only have a total of two thousand seven hundred sixty-one point five square feet, a hundred square feet less than what we proposed. So what we are seeking is a side yard setback. Number six oh six two E one E two and then a side yard combined six oh six two E one F. The current side yard setback requirement is twenty-two feet. And as we mentioned, the house kind of spreads more across the property. So you're, the existing non-conforming and encroaching side yard setback on one side is nine point seven four feet. And on the other side is a fifteen point six oh feet. There was no change in our design for additional setback requirements. So it's just, the additions and renovations are just building above the existing house. So I'll take you through the, if you bear with me, I'll just take you through the floor plans. We did provide on zoning information on the first page, the lot area, lot width, lot depth, front yard setback, rear, rear yard setback, rear unoccupied, lot coverage, now building coverage of FAR, a building height, all meet the requirements, including FAR. So we, we have no problems with those. So we're just seeking the side yard setbacks. If you look onto V two, you'll see the existing conditions. You'll note that because it's a split level, we're showing the first floor and the upper level, the ba, the bedroom level simultaneously, the first floor only three rooms on it, plus a foyer, a kitchen, a dining room, a living room. And then you go up to the, the three bedrooms that exist in the house. So there's currently three bedrooms and two bathrooms in the house, plus a powder room. On V three, there's an existing basement garage. And, and elevations V four and V five existing exterior as it is extent right now. What we're presenting is on V six for the verification, we are rebuilding the front covered porch in plan to be a nicer design. We are rebuilding the front covered porch and plan to be a nicer design and a little bit softer and less institutional looking. And then we're expanding to the east over the existing garage and existing expanded and renovated master bedroom suite with a balcony off the back. That it does have a, a solid wall on one side with a louver to provide privacy for the neighbors and privacy for the craigs. On the, on V7 is for the bedroom addition, which goes above the living room, goes on the second floor, goes above the living room space. And with the split level, you come up into a loft space for the, for the office. And then there's two additional bedrooms on that floor and an unfinished attic. The house has really no storage. The spaces are finished in the basement and they need that space because it really isn't like a first floor family room. So they really use basement space a lot. And then on V8, you'll see on the basement level, the addition of, for the back of the garage, the current third garage is a small, it's only 1611 by 10 foot 10. And we're proposing to expand it out back to get it to 22 foot 5 inches by 11 feet. So you'd actually be able to get a car in it. We're showing a larger car in that just to give a sense of scale, but you could fit any normal car in that. But right now you really can't. Is, let's say a Mini Cooper or Marcar. V9 is showing the new elevations. How do we match with the siding? And then we're going to be using wood, natural siding on the upper level to clear. We're trying to visually unsplit the split so the house looks more balanced than it did be before. So the upper level will have a wood, natural wood siding, a new wood front door. And the garage doors would be a natural wood. We're going to do a shingle, asphalt shingle roof that'll blend with that as well. And then the house will be painted or more punchy color, like something like a deep navy I show. And the different elevations shown on, so the front of the house, you'll see on V9, the new front porch that runs across the front. The attic, which has to the right, has a single window in it. And then the new bedroom suite, which had the bedroom, the bedroom windows across the front and the three windows above the front door are where the study loft is. The one window to the right above the garage on that elevation is in the master suite. On the rear elevation, there's a clear story window that adds some light into the kitchen and second floor hallway. So it doesn't feel dark and dreary. And then, and then there's a balcony off the master and off the one bedroom on the back. And the side elevations are very solid and punched. So they're, they have window, you know, limited windows on both the north and, and east side, rather the east and west side of the house. We've, we look that we feel that the new design is, improves the house visually. It's consistent with the master plan in that it's improving the character of the house. As Chris said, he would like the house to feel more contextual in the neighborhood and be more, more contemporary with the other houses. And it's also consistent with the scale of the street and the neighborhood. And that's, that's the beginning of my presentation.
I will start first with questions from board members. And I'll, I'll start off with one that may seem kind of off the beaten track. But I'm looking at the application form and section 11 says, quote, "Recent development of commercial lot on South Orange Avenue directly behind the residence has made it undesirable for the applicant to expand the house for the rear addition." So applicant would prefer to add an addition above the existing house footprint. My question is, what commercial development are we talking about on South Orange Avenue?
There's an institutional development where there's a new synagogue space. And then there's a large parking lot. It's where, if you remember, Mr. Steinberg, Don's, which then became a, another restaurant and then became a play space and then that children's preschool. And then it became, oh, was it Tudor Time? I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. Tudor Time. And then there's also, there's also some, a few townhouses along South Orange Avenue. That's what he's talking about. So what happened was if we pushed the addition out back, it pushed you further towards that. And it felt like it was nicer to have, just keep the backyard as it current condition because you do have the Rippling Brook behind it and the pool in, in that space. So it just felt like, why tear off their existing deck and the spaces they actually like on the property? And so that's what, that's what that was a relationship.
I want to ask one more question so that it's absolutely clear for our attorney who's got to draft the resolution in this matter, one way or the other. The building coverage variance request has been withdrawn. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I just want to be absolutely certain of that.
Yes. So the only you were seeking for side yard setback and side yard combined, which are pre-existing non-conformities that we are continuing with the addition. That's what we're looking for.
I have a question about that, Mr. Conway, because the pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback is 15.83 feet. Eileen notes that the variance requested is 15.83 feet on the right side. But your testimony and the plan shows 15.6. So.
Well, we're, we're looking for 15, yeah, it should be 15.83. I apologize. That's, that's a, it should remain the 15.83.
So it's not that the structure is slightly skewed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, it's slightly, it's slightly angled, just slightly. So we're anticipating that that corner is slightly closer to 15.6. You're correct because the property is not exactly square to the edge of the house. At least in our looking at the plans and overlaying that with the, the, the site survey. So it is correct. That's correct. We anticipate that it would be, you know, a few hair of inches slightly closer on that one corner. But the other side, along the rest side of the existing building, which you'll see on V1, that just has hatching on it. That's where it already exists at 15.83, but as it extends out slightly, there, it, it looks like if, because the property is aligned is slightly askew to the edge of the house, that it is actually 15.6. So that is a correction.
All right.
That would also explain the deviation from side yard, side combined. Because I believe Eileen indicates 25.6% and attachment E is saying 25.3%.
You're correct. You're correct. So both of those are slightly different because of that splay. I apologize for any confusion.
Just so that we're all very clear about this, the violation for side yard setback, as you face the house from the street, it's on the right-hand side of the house.
Right-hand side of the house behind the garage.
And will you tell the board, I'm sure most of the members have actually been there. But will you tell the board what currently exists on the right-hand side of the house? Both on this property and on the property next door?
Currently on this side of that house, on the, on this property is a one-story garage. And we're proposing a two-story space. And on the right-hand side of the house next door is, is a two-story house.
Do you mean the left-hand side of the, the property?
Or the east side, the east side. He was, I think that's what just Mr. Steinberg was asking. So to the right of the property, there's currently a two-story house that sits on Rippling Brook. And that's it. That's a two-story house right there.
Are there any other questions from board members before we get to any members of the public? Yes.
Okay. I have a question. I mean, to belabor further the side yard setback issue on the right there. I mean, the side yard setback for a one-story building up to 18 feet is 15 feet.
Yes, correct. But it, right, it's, it's 18 feet for a one-story. And it's, it's going to be, it'll be within that 22 feet with a two-story.
Currently, there is no existing non-conformity on that side.
Now, there's a non-conformity because it's only, it currently, the existing is only 15.83 feet.
But it's a one-story, right?
Correct.
So the requirement there, then it has to be minimum 15 feet away. And it's more than 15 feet away.
Correct. Yeah. But we're, we're looking at what I'm saying. Yes, you're correct. There's not.
There is no very, there is no non-conforming issue as it stands right now.
Correct.
Once there's a second floor.
Yes, you're correct. But now.
There is, when the second floor is put on there, then you have a non-conformity. But currently there is not a non-conforming issue.
Right. Yes. Because the, the roof, even though it pitches, doesn't push above the one, correct. The, the only part, correct. Yes.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Now, this is the time for questions only. You'll have plenty of opportunity to make a statement.
Right. I just have a clarification question on your original question on the backyard commercial property. Because I think.
Ask your question.
Okay. My understanding is that behind their property, there was not a material deterioration because the Tudor Time was replaced with a synagogue, which is actually nicer. And the actual apartment construction is significantly farther over, which is essentially two houses over. So that, I don't believe that it's, it degrades their backyard or their property. That's, that was my question. If I'm wrong, you could, you know, say that.
That was from you.
Conway, do you?
I think that, I think, in my opinion, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a more active parking lot. But I mean, obviously this is, this is generated by the Craig's opinion and what they wanted. So I think that's really an answer for the Craig's to answer.
Sure. I'd be happy to answer. I guess I'm not 100% sure what I'm answering though. Is it, is it, is it a question of whether or not I believe that the new synagogue degrades the, the backyard? Or if it, is that what I'm asking, answering?
Well, this all started with my question, which I was just quoting from the actual application that you filed. Where it says, "Recent development of commercial lot on South Orange Avenue directly behind the residence has made it undesirable for the applicant to expand the house." Basically, we're.
So I, I think that, um, all right. So now I think I understand the context. I think that the context was that it'd be better not to build a, move my house closer and extend out very far to the commercial property. I think that that's the context of why we're going up versus going deep out on the main structure of the house.
Okay. Are there any other questions from members of the public? Questions only now. Question.
Okay.
Yes.
There is a, there is a double window.
Let me have your name, please.
Oh, my name is Dong Chen. I'm living on the right side of their house. My name.
Say your name.
Julia Chen.
Okay.
Okay. I'm on the right side of their house.
And your question is?
My question, two question. There is a double window, double window on the second level of the addition. I want to know what is the size of that? Okay. If you look at the side view of the, let's see.
The proposed addition on V12.
Okay.
On V12.
V12.
There is a double window?
Well, only one can speak at a time.
Yes, it's, to answer that question, the, the two windows are each three foot wide by four foot six inches high.
Combined together?
And there's two, together, that would be six foot wide by four foot six inches high. And they both meet, they both be degress requirements for a bedroom.
Are there any other questions?
Okay. Another question, the garage, the existing garage, how much you push back? How many?
We are going from the current garage, I'll tell you. Just bear with me. We are going back five, five foot six inches back. We are going from a garage that's currently 16 foot 11 inches to a garage that's 22 foot 5 inches. So that's, oh, I apologize. Yeah, seven, that's three foot plus, yeah. It's two foot six inches. It's a five foot six inches deeper, six foot, six inches deeper. Sorry. Is that right? Hold on. Pardon me. I'm just checking my math.
About five feet.
It's about five feet. And that makes the garage more usable. Otherwise it's not a usable garage. So that's, we're trying to make it usable for them.
All right. This is the, this is the time when any members of the public can give statements with respect to this application, not questions, statements.
Okay. We would like to give a statement.
Yes.
You need to raise your right hand. You need to be sworn in. Wait, 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 you need to raise your right hands and be sworn in. One second. You swear from the testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth.
I do.
Say your name and your address, spell your name for the record.
My name is Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L., Thomas, T.H.O.M.A.S. Last name is I.B.E.N., pronounced Eben.
And your address?
17 Rippling Brook Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey. 07078.
Your statement, sir.
Yes. Thank you for giving us the time to speak. We are the owners of 17 Rippling Brook Drive, which is on the right side of Rippling Brook Drive. We in general have been good neighbors and sensitive to our neighbors as well. And we want to. And we want to always be good neighbors. We want to congratulate them on their plan for the expansion of their house. But we do have significant privacy concern about the architect's design specifically related to the second-level addition above the, what we'll call the third garage. The, as was pointed out in the proposal, this proposed addition has a variance when it is proposed addition, which accentuates the proximity to our house. The double window and the patio on the second-level addition cause particular concerns. The reason for this in particular is the impact is that what separates our two houses is a driveway. And between that and the addition, there is no place to put, plant screening trees. Our three bedrooms, including our master bedrooms, all have windows which would face directly onto that, what was the garage. And with such a close distance, you know, it does, it really impedes our privacy. The second related point is the impact on our backyard. The, currently, we've put in a line of trees to provide both parties coverage between our backyard, so that, with privacy. However, the line of trees stops at the ramp right at the end of our backyard. And given that the ramp, you can't, we can't plant trees there, the, from the double window and the patio, that would give them a sweeping views of our backyard. And we do spend not as much time as the Craigs do in their backyard, but we do spend significant amount of time there. And that does significantly impede on our privacy. So it's really what we're concerned about is the double window and the patio in the back and facing our party that we were concerned at. And we would like, you know, to have that basically mitigated before we go through that variance.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else from the audience who has a statement he or she would like to make with respect to this application before I ask the board members to discuss it?
Does that include me, or are we looking at the audience?
Audience. I don't want to cut you off, though, Mr. Craig, if you have something that you absolutely feel you need to say, by all means.
Well, I'll wait for the audience, any comments, additional comments, I don't want to derail.
Well, there is no one else from the audience.
All right.
So I'm now going to ask the board members.
I think.
Mr. Steinberg, my wife would want to make one comment, just to finish her.
She wasn't sworn in.
Okay.
Dong Chen.
Wait, 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 your right hand, do you swear from the testimony about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
Yes.
Your name and your address, spelling your name.
My name on the record is Dong Chen, but I go by Julia, D.O.N.G.C.H.E.N. I'm on the 17 Rippling Brook Drive, on the right side of Craig's house.
All right, keep your voice up so we can all hear you.
Okay, my question is, I think that the master bedroom on the second level, I think they have a lot of windows, the big patio, glass patio door, and also two double doors on our, facing our side, which we always very self-conscious, all of our rooms facing that property already. And also, they have another window on the front, facing the front. So they have a sweet side of the wall have windows. And I think it will be more appreciated if they don't open a double window towards our side. On the, both side, they have a window already, and then they could also add a skylight if really want the more light. But that double window bothered us so much, that's one thing. And another thing is, I spend tremendous time in the backyard most of the time of the year, and then I'm very self-conscious about that. And that's why we planted lots of trees along the fence, but that corner, we couldn't cover that corner. And that corner is exactly the building, second level, to see our house, to see our backyard. No offense.
Mr. Conway and Mr. and Mrs. Craig.
Yes.
The way we proceed now is that I will ask the board members to give me their opinions, and then there will be a motion to either grant or deny the two variances that are left. And we'll take them one at a time. If there is any way that you want to delay the board from proceeding at this point, please let me know. You can always take an adjournment and come back at a later meeting if you wish. But I just wanted to make it clear to you that that is an option that you have if you choose to take it.
So just, I appreciate the opportunity for a referral. And I think I want to acknowledge that Michael and Julia's concerns are well-heard, and we want to be good neighbors. And I certainly don't want to impose on and degrade the value of their property or make them feel less private, so that's absolutely tantamount important to me. Few key points to highlight here. We currently have a window on that side of the property. Appreciate that there'll be two and not one, but we have a window. Second point is, we have a autumn October glory maple tree that would extend essentially to the roofline of the house, shielding the property in addition to the, I think, the green giants that are planted that were referenced earlier. And I think maybe Tom can note that there's actually, the balcony that we're proposing to put in place is got a full wall on their side of the property, shielding both privacy on my part and their part. And perhaps that wasn't necessarily appreciated with the plans. So there is a bit more, maybe, actually, you can understand the plans. If you don't already, please, as board, so. But that said, Tom, I don't know if you want to add anything at this point?
You know, certainly, the window that is in the master bedroom, we have a double window there, I mean, if you wanted to, if the Craigs would be interested in just having a single window there or a different location of the window on that new master suite bedroom, they can certainly do it. You know, that's up to them as far as mitigation on that. And then the balcony, we do have a solid wall, we do have a louver to let some air through, but I mean, that could just be a solid wall there to provide that. I think, though, if we went to, you know, a full, solid wall on that entire side of the house on the second floor, it might look strange and might seem strange for the Craigs, but I mean, that's up to them if that's something that they would consider.
Do I understand that you want an adjournment, or do you not?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up unless, you know, if there's current discussion about it, I'm just bringing it up to the Craigs, if that's the condition. But I'm just bringing it up as hypothetical, that that might be something that they might consider when they are listening to.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Craig, I'm going to interrupt you. Mr. and Mrs. Craig, tell us now, do you want to go forward tonight?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I think we should go ahead and hear the discussions and questions that the board might have as well.
All right, board members, what are your thoughts?
I'll start it. I had privacy concerns when I visited the property and saw on the right-hand side the continuous driveway. So there isn't anywhere to plant shielding trees or any kind of a barrier there. I really think there are some privacy concerns that I would like to have the two parties speak about and see if they can resolve.
Along those lines, I think that side yard setback is a problem.
Anyone else?
I also think it would behoove you to discuss with your neighbors.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. and Mrs. Craig, you've heard the three members of the board who have spoken on this matter. Now, what's your decision?
My decision would be, again, I'd like to hear it, and it sounds like we'll still file for the variance. I will work out with the neighbors some of their concerns, but I, again, would go forward and file for the variance.
Well, I just want to make it clear to you that what we're voting on tonight is what's before us.
Okay.
The plans that are before us.
Mr. Craig, let me explain something to you. If you go forward and ask the board to vote tonight, it's on your testimony, your architect's testimony, and the testimony of your neighbors, and you've heard the concerns expressed by some of the board members, if you ask them to vote tonight on your application as it presently stands, and if you do not get a majority of the board in favor of one or both of the variances that are needed, then you would not be able to come back with a different plan unless it was substantially different from the one that's currently presented. The chairman is giving you an opportunity to just adjourn the hearing for tonight, leaving the hearing open, so that you and your architect have an opportunity to possibly meet with your neighbors and see if you can come to some mutually acceptable alternative that might address their privacy concerns and the concerns you've heard expressed by some of the board members. And then you could come back to another hearing to wrap up the hearing, including perhaps explaining to the board that you've made some revision that addresses your neighbor's privacy concerns and the concerns expressed by at least three of the board members this evening.
Okay, that's tremendously helpful. I didn't appreciate that that was the process. I think there was a rejection and then a refiling of a new set of plans. So that is helpful, and I didn't appreciate that. So thank you for the clarification.
And as the architect, I would suggest not for a vote and to just have that meeting and just mitigate the neighbors' concerns on that side of the house and do an adjustment to the balcony design and the master bedroom wall so that they can move forward and that they can address the neighbors' concerns. We did start with the design with thinking about that and considering it. And so I think it's important, that's always been a concern of ours, to minimize the impact on the neighbors. So I would suggest, Craig and Margaret, that we push to have that meeting with the neighbors, and then we can come back. When would the next, would we just come back the next time? When is the next hearing?
Eileen would have to tell us now when she has, what would be available. Because in order to avoid having to renotice, we would have to, right now, this evening, before this ends, we would have to say that we're carrying it to the specific date. That way, you wouldn't have to renotice anybody.
Yes.
Eileen, can you give us?
Is there a date that you know, we could hear a continuation?
Eileen, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Our July, we have a meeting on July 6th, but we have the Saks property, the Springfield McShus property, and one other residential, so I hesitate putting them on that. I would probably suggest that the 20th of July would be better.
20th of July?
Yes.
20th of July.
Yeah, trust me, you don't want to be on on July 6th.
Does that work for you, Chris and Margaret?
And Tom?
Yeah, it works for me. And just to question that, Eileen, we would just have the meeting, and then we just submit? What do you require regarding submitted, because it is in a short period of time for those drawings? Do we send them ahead a few days ahead, or a week ahead, or what do you need it to be so that I could just plan for that to get to all the board members, et cetera? Or do we just come and present it with the revised?
We set up, the packages would go out ten days prior, so these packages would go out on, these packages would be delivered on July, I would need a revised drawing by July 10th.
July 10th, okay, very good. So keep, so.
I'm going to make a formal announcement now that this matter of Christopher and Margaret Craig at 15 Rippling Brook Drive is hereby carried to the meeting of July 20, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
No further notices required. Now, no further notices required unless you add some new variance to the mix, Tom.
No, the goal is to not add anything, it's to take things away.
Correct, okay.
Or make the issue be, I mean.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, the next page.
Wait, before you move on, Tim Klessi is back with Mr. and Mrs. Shetty.
Oh, okay. Mr. Klessi.
Hold on.
There he is.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Klessi, talk to us.
Before we could, well, okay, I just, Steve is here, but he still can't, can't vote on this anyway, because he wasn't here, so that's.
Yeah, he can't vote on this one. Tim, you're on mute.
Mute, Tim.
The Shettys would like to agree to remove the trampoline and the playset upon sale or by June 15th, 2030, whichever comes first. So I said 10 years, that's where that came from. We paint the playset, paint the legs of the trampoline, because the upper portion of the trampoline is black fabric and not paintable. Put both the playset and the trampoline located inside the fenced and planted U area. And then we would like to plant eight 22, or no, 22 eight-foot conifers on the hillside side and the hobart side, and five four-foot conifers on the driveway side, which is underneath the existing planting. And that would be everything, and we'd hope that you could, and the Shettys, Mr. Shetty is extremely sorry that he went ahead and put his swing setup without noticing.
Is there a motion?
Wait, and that's with the recording condition, too.
Pardon me?
Yes, yes.
Recording in the county.
Recording in the county.
So could we, if we're going to make a motion on this, could we put in something, I don't recall this being said, where they have to? I don't I don't recall this being said, where they have to maintain the plantings? Can that be recorded as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Is there a motion with those clarifications?
I make a motion with those clarifications.
Motion is made to approve.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Wolfgang.
Wolfgang, okay.
Second?
Second.
Was that Kevin?
Yeah.
Call the role, please.
Mary McNabb?
No.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Kevin Munzel?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are to.
Let me just get them out of here.
The fourth case, which is Wilbur Henry. At 108 Glen. Is Mr. Wilbur?
Wait, I didn't bring him over yet. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, here he is. He's alone.
There we go. Good evening, everyone.
Okay, wait a minute, let me just swear you in. We don't have a video.
How do I fix that? Start video. Yes, thank you. Here we go.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
I so affirm.
Your name for the record, please.
Wilbur Henry, W I L B U R, last name Henry, H E N R Y, at 108 Glen Avenue in Milburn, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilbur.
Mr. Henry.
Tell us what what you want and why.
Yes, thank you. First off, I would mention that my address on the agenda says that I live in Short Hills, and it is Milburn.
Thank you.
Just so you know. I am looking, we are applying for a deck, a variance for a deck. Our house presently is four feet, two inches from the property line, which violates a 12-foot setback, which we have. And we would like to build a deck to replace or over an existing concrete patio that is in the same footprint. And also replace a deteriorating porch, all of which predated our ownership. And I believe may have been built without a permit. It is extremely unsafe, and the stairs are very steep, and it is a bit of a problem. As you can see from the plans that we submitted, that we have, as opposed, we have a very steep pitch on our property. It's built into a hillside. And so to have one flight of stairs go down would be very, very steep and dangerous. Therefore, we want to mitigate that with a, by taking the stairs to a second ramp, to a second platform, which it requires is nine feet from the property line. So we are looking, as I said, for a variance for the requirement, the 12-foot side setback requirement. This is an uncovered deck. There is an existing overhang over the porch now, which would remain. It requires some repair, but it would remain.
But I have a question for Eileen David. What district is this house in?
It's in the R5.
Is the, what's the minimum width of a lot in the R5?
75 feet.
Yeah.
I should, I should.
It is 75 feet.
75 feet. And how wide is your property?
50 feet.
My second question to you, Mr. Henry, is what is immediately to you? The side yard setback as you face your house is on the left, correct?
That is correct.
And tell us, what is on the lot immediately to the left of your house?
It is the house that is owned by the Frederickson's. They have a deck themselves. However, it is further away than, than the variance that I have. I believe they would be within the 12-foot. They would, they would be in compliance if it hadn't predated. You know, I mean, it's been there as, I've been here 12 years, and that deck was here when I came. So they have, they have a deck.
Are there other questions from board members for this witness? Is there anyone in the public who has a question for this witness? I hear none and I see none. Board members? You haven't asked any questions, and there are no questions from the audience. If there is an audience, I'm going to turn this over to you for discussion purposes. Who wants to start off?
I mean, Joe, I'll start.
Go ahead, Mary. You know, I.
I think that's a great idea to correct a safety issue, so that's what my statement is.
Say that again, Mary. I'm having trouble hearing.
I think, I think it's a great plan to correct a safety issue.
Kevin?
Yeah, and I, you know, the need here is really driven by the minimum of the lot width. If he had the 75 feet in the zone, I don't think he would have to come to us. So I really think it's, it's a reasonable request from my perspective.
You took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say that I think this is a classic hardship case. Because this property is basically two-thirds as wide as it should be. Is that correct, or is it three-quarters? Oh, two-thirds, right. As wide as it should be. So I really think that there is a hardship here. Is there a motion on this case?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second? All right, you know what? I'm not voting on this, I don't think.
No, you're not.
Sorry.
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Greg Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar? Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go to, I guess this is the last case of the evening. This is a Sealan case. I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Michael Sealan and Kevin Huffman, who is his contractor.
Okay, this is Kevin Huffman, the architect here?
No, he's the contractor.
I'm the contractor.
I'm not seeing you, Mr. Huffman.
No, I'm trying to get it up. Hang on. Just a second.
There he is.
There you go, sorry.
Okay, now, so we swear the witnesses. Are you both going to testify?
No, I'm just here just in case there's questions.
Okay.
So let's get to the votes.
Why don't you both, why don't you both raise your right hand, just so you're both sworn in? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
Yes.
Just one at a time, state your name and address for the record.
First, Michael Sealan, address is 89 Elm Street, Milburn, New Jersey. Spell my name, or? No, I'm happy, thank you.
Kevin Huffman, I'm Michael's contractor.
And your, and your company?
KDH Home Design.
Say it again slowly.
KDH Home Design.
Where is it located?
Maplewood, New Jersey.
All right, Michael, you want to tell us what's going on here?
Sure. So just first off, I'm the homeowner at 89 Elm Street. My wife and I have been living here for 13 years, and we have two children in the Milburn School system. We're proposing to add two bedrooms and a bathroom to the second floor of our house, 89 Elm Street, by building a second-story dormer addition to the full length of the right side of the structure. We're requesting C. variance relief for a front yard setback. This variance is for a pre-existing non-conforming condition, which is not being exacerbated by our proposed improvements. The existing structure was built in 1904 at its current location with the existing front yard setback of 37.95 feet. So we're seeking a variance for a pre-existing non-conformity of 2.05 feet. Please also note that the existing front yard setback is in line with the rest of the houses on both sides of the street. And as I previously stated, our proposed improvements are not exacerbating the pre-existing non-conformity in any way. We're not modifying the existing footprint or foundation of the structure, nor are we approaching into the front yard or making modifications to the existing land. So I have, I guess I was sharing my screen, I can kind of talk through some of the documents that we submitted. That's all right. All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
We can see this screen.
So it was going to start, this is the existing site plan. It is actually also the future site plan, as our proposed construction has no impact whatsoever. As you can see, I've drawn in the front, the distance from an arrow pointing the, showing the front yard setback. As you can see, the distance from the property line to the front of the house is 37.95 feet. All right, as I said, this is the pre-existing non-conforming condition. All right, so I'm going to, all right. Next, this is just a picture of the photograph of the front of the house from the street. Just to demonstrate the existing condition of the house, we plan to raise the roof on the right side of the structure and add a full-length dormer. You can see the slope roof right there. That's where we'll be adding it. Please note that there's no attic space above the existing second story on the left side, and we're not adding any for the construction. All right. So you see here, actually, just. Race these drawings here. So this is drawing AD 001, which is the second floor demo plan. So I figured it was a great way to kind of show you what the existing space is like. As you can see, half the floor is livable space consisting of two bedrooms, one in the front, one in the back, and a bathroom in the middle. The other half is just open attic space with access via door at the top and stairs. I'm just gonna highlight that quickly. So that's the attic space, and that's the access point right there. So I was switched to what we plan on doing. So what you see here is, this is drawing A102, which is the proposed second floor plan. As you can see, there's a master bedroom suite in the rear consisting of a master bedroom, master bath, your locker and closet. And that's in this, it's not drawing for me. It's in this section right here. Bedroom, bathroom, and the closet. And then in the front, there's an additional bedroom. Okay, so what I'm showing here is drawing A203, which is the proposed front elevation. On the front right side of the second story, you can see the profile of the proposed dormer. And that's, you know, this section right up here. And then I will quickly show you the proposed right side elevation. So this is drawing A201, as I said, is the proposed right elevation. In designing this addition, we wanted to honor and maintain the existing craftsman and bungalow style while providing additional space that we needed for a family. The simplest thing to do would have been to just mirror the existing dormer that was built on the left side of the house in 1973 and mirror that onto the right side. But we felt that this lack of character, lacked character would take away from the home's arts and crafts charm. We want to design something that would look as if it had always been there. And in order to do this, you know, we plan on using the same cedar shingles and match the windows and the eaves on the new construction as much as possible with that of the original 1904 structure. You know, as I said, we're seeking the front yard setback variance relief for the pre-existing non-conformity of 2.05 feet. And our proposed improvements are not impacting that in any way.
Mr. Sealan, just so I understand, and the board understands, the house presently violates the front yard setback, is that correct?
That's correct.
By 2.05 feet?
That's correct.
And you wish to add a portion on the second floor that is basically would have the same setback as the rest of the house, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, board members, any questions? I see none. Let's ask if there's anyone from the audience here.
I have a question.
Yes, you have a question.
Could the advocate please talk to us about the impact he feels this construction will have on his neighbor?
The actual construction or the finished, the finished building?
The finished building.
The finished building.
We are not approaching on the front yard in any way. We are not adding windows to the front of the house. I don't see how it will have any impact on our neighbors in any way.
And you're not seeking a side yard setback variant?
Nope, nope.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone from the audience here on this case?
Before you do that, I just would like to make sure the record is clear that all of the exhibits that Mr. Sealan presented were part of the application. That's why we didn't have to mark anything. The photographs, all of the plans.
We have all the photographs.
They were all submitted with the application and are part of the package.
Is that correct, Mrs. Sealan?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Can I just ask this Sean Mahan, is that the person who asked the question already, or do you have another question? Bring this person up. I see a hand raised, and I don't want to make sure.
I don't see a hand.
Mr. Mahan, did you have a question? Mr. Mahan, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, I have a concern, I'm the neighbor directly across the street. There's...
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
I'm Joe Steinberg, the chair. Let me explain to you, this is a time in the hearing when we entertain questions, not comments, questions from members of the public. Do you have a question? You'll have plenty of opportunity to speak about any concerns you have. But now, this is the time for questions only.
Okay, so rephrasing it as a question, I, will the construction have an impact beyond the property bounds in terms of refuse, waste, egress or ingress into the property?
Again, will the actual construction or will the finished?
The construction itself, I have no, the finished, the finished construction is no bearing on it.
I'm going to interject here that the function of this board is not to be involved in the construction aspect of any project. We just are being asked to, by the applicant, to grant one variance of 2.05 feet, which is a front yard setback variance. That's all we're being asked to do. We have no jurisdiction over any construction or anything that happens during construction.
Okay. With, in order to need that variance, you need that variance because it's a very small setback, which means that the area to construct, for construction is very tight in the front of the house, which may affect the ingress or egress to my property and my driveway.
Is that your comment?
Well, I, I want, I'm looking for assurance, either by way of question or comment, that that will not be the case.
Well, you can't get assurance from this board. We have no jurisdiction in that regard.
Those matters are typically handled through the building department and, and there's certain protocols that have to be followed. I think Mr. Huffman could speak to that. They're just, there's just certain requirements that have to be met as far as allowing people to have access to their, being able to get down the street, you know, equipment blocking the street. It's typically handled through the building department, not through this board.
All right, that, so your comments or questions in that regard would be directed to the building department in the municipal building?
I have another question, I guess, from this, I'll bring him over.
Hello?
Hi, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm one of the neighbors on the Maple Street, which is north of the property. I have a question about the windows on the, you know, final map that are overlooking to the north side. Just concerned about the privacy, if there are any windows opening to the back of the property, meaning to the north, to the Maple side.
Um, the north side, I believe we're doing construction on the southeast side.
This, this proposed construction that's being asked, that's before this board seeking a variance, is not on the north side of the building.
Okay, all right.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now I'm going to ask, is there anyone else in the audience that has a question? Not a comment, a question for the board. Now I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application. Apparently not. All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. And board members, any comments about this application?
Welcome.
Yes, Joy?
I think it's a good application. I think it's a good way to add needed space to a house without adding to the building coverage. So I think it's a good solution.
Thank you.
And I would favor it.
Is there anyone else who has a comment? Yes, Wolfgang?
I also think it's a very good application and I think it's a, it's going to be a nice improvement to the property.
Thank you. Now, I'm having trouble counting people here. Do either of our alternates vote on this?
No.
We have seven people, right?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, yes, we have seven. Okay, is there a motion from one of the regular members of the board?
Move approval.
Who said that?
That was Steve.
Steve?
I'll second.
Mary seconds.
Mary McNabb?
Yes, yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next meeting of the board will be on July the...
Six.
Six, and it'll be remote, correct?
It will.
We, we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, yes. Thank you. We have on the agenda, if I can find my agenda in all this paper.
The minutes from June 1st, Joe.
Minutes of June 1st, right. Mary, you had one comment, I think, and that's been taken into account? Has it?
I did have. I just had, it was very minor, there was a space between the work calendar and the sign for number under the first sentence on applications.
Did you get those, did you get those too, Eileen?
Yes.
Yeah, she got them, yes, I made that.
Were those very minor corrections? Is there a motion? Who's eligible on this? Who was at the, that remotely?
Everyone was there.
Everyone, okay. That was a quick one. I see that we adjourned at 8:47, was it?
7:47.
I'm sorry, 7:47. Okay. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. See you on the sixth.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Craig Plutner made the motion, very seconded. All in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. See you on July 6th.
Thank you.
This is more work than being at town hall.
Totally.
Good night, everybody.